Be given by Councilperson Jones and pledged by Councilperson Washington.
Dear Lord, I hope you hear our prayers tonight from the city of Wataunka. That you look after us and look after our city leaders, state leaders, and national leaders as this is a time of uncertainty and a time of sickness. It's in your name I pray, amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Here.
And Councilmember Justice?
Here.
Councilmember Gant?
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Willis?
Here.
You received in your packets a copy of the amendment from the council meeting held on June 15th, 2020. Any corrections? Is there a motion to approve?
I may.
Thank you. There's a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, let me know when you say an aye.
Aye.
You don't want to vote. So those amendments have been approved. An old business is giving ordinance 2020 dash three an ordinance to adopt regulations for small cell facilities. This is a second reading, but I think there is an amendment to this, and would you read them now?
Yeah. Barry, you want to do it?
Yeah. Amendment has been made to correct some typos of technical language and then also add a section in the non-appability section. So summary changes. Section 11B, two, change the building official that authorizes grant in writing, one. Two, the building department is authorized to grant in writing. Section 12E, change the applicant at either of their extents shall cause those structures to the applicant at their extent shall cause those structures. Section 12 dash 12H, change the building official or his day's need may require, two, the building department may require. Section 13B, remove further the provisions in this chapter are not intended to alter, affect, or modify the provisions in ordinance 12 cable television and ordinance 14 telecommunication regulations. In section 13C, the amendment proposes to add the following exclusion applies to electrical utilities regulated by the Alabama Public Service Commission unless and until such time that electric utility falls within definition of personal wireless service provider, at which time the following exclusion will be of no further force or effect with respect to the electric utilities provisions of personal wireless services as defined in 47 U.S. Code 332. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed to apply to the poles, attachments, equipment, facilities, or business activities of an electric utility that is regulated by the Alabama Public Service Commission. This ordinance also does not apply to the attachments, equipment, facilities, or business activities of such electric utilities' parents, affiliates, or subsidiaries when they are acting in support of the electric utility. Nothing in this ordinance shall affect or be construed to affect any pole attachment agreement between any applicant or personal wireless service provider and any owner, lessor, or control of the pole, utility pole, or support structure. Nothing in the aforementioned pole attachment agreement shall exalt or constitute to exalt any applicant or personal wireless service provider from complying with terms of this ordinance. That is the end of the changes proposed, changes to the ordinance as read last week.
And second reading, what's the interest of the council motion to dismiss with the second reading? Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All in favor, let me know when you say an aye.
Aye.
You don't want to vote. So we'll discuss with that reading and move for adoption with the amendment.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have a question. Could you come around where I can see this?
Yes, sir.
Backside. Let's look at, we have a change at the top on section 11B.
Yes, sir.
All right, read that again.
Change the building official is authorized to grant in writing to the building department is authorized to grant in writing.
Okay. Who gives the building department?
If you look at, let's see. Section two. Definition nine, building department means director of development services, building official, or any or any day's need of the mayor to perform administrative procedures outlined in this ordinance.
Okay, now if you use the word building department, I think it does the mayor, that's going to fall out somewhere else there, but I do it up here. Don't you have a person that's in charge of the building department? Who is the person in charge of the building department?
The building department is comprised of several different.
No, 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 they asked you that, asking once in proportion. There, who is the department head in the building department?
There's actually two department heads in the building department.
How many?
Two.
Or who are they?
Justin is one, is the development services, and John Strickland is the building official.
And the building department is comprised of those two teams.
Okay. Well, why would you say the building department instead of saying like you did father, I found out that the the department head would be in charge? You're saying the building department, that you have five or six people in there, sir, does make the decision, but you are ahead, you made you made the decision and discussed it, that's what I look at.
Right.
Building department, that's everybody back there, that could be the critical person else at the bottom, he or she is at the building.
Whoever's taking the lead about mayor to issue permits, and at this time, building permits go through the building inspector. But we were writing the ordinance to apply going forward, and if he doesn't, does it, makes someone else, and that person would be able to issue these permits.
The the mayor would have the authority to do that?
That's the way it's written in this, yes, sir. When we when we originally wrote, the ordinance was originally written, there were several terms in the ordinance that were used interchangeably. The mayor, his day's need, the building official, there was another term, I don't recall right now, and we consolidated those terms into the building department, so there would be no confusion through the whole ordinance, because there was there was some confusion when we first wrote it, and who was doing what, so we consolidated it into into one building department term.
So mayor, you would have the authority to tell them who the next person would be to make that decision?
According to this document, yes.
I've got a little ahead of myself, I saw that over here farther where you said the mayor would, so that's one of the problems that we've been having, but I'll read that one later, okay, that takes care of that one. The next one would be section 12E on the same page.
Yes, sir. Change applicant at either of their extents shall cause those structures to the applicant at their expense shall cause those structures.
Okay. So applicant is generally going to say or exit, maybe an application.
Whoever, yeah, whoever's applying for the applicant, that that basically puts the burden, the financial burden, all on applicant, not on, the way it was read, read, it was a little bit confusing what the burden was.
The word applicant you're looking at that you took out at the top and said either on that one.
That's right.
Okay, why did you take either on?
To make it more specific that it's the applicant's burden to pay those expenses for the permit.
That's one person.
Whoever the applicant is, maybe a company or whoever whoever's acting or to gain
Okay, I'm just.
The small cell or the small cell permit to construct such facility.
Well, if you go back, if you either in there, that would take care, if it's a company relevant, that makes, you mentioned that's due to the competent of whoever the individual is, you said applicant at either of their expense, and you wanted to change it, put it there.
Yeah, we don't want anybody to have a choice. We want whoever's on the application to pay the, that's why we pulled the either out, because it makes it whether it's a cloud, who's got to pay what, we don't want any cloud. It needs to say exactly. So we don't want any doubt that it's the applicant, and applicant includes an entity or an individual, is the definition of applicant.
Okay. So if I have a company and we want to do it, you want my name on it, not generally have to see company? I could, my company could sign for it?
Whoever's going to apply for that photo.
It would be my company, so it could be either.
Yep. Well, no, it would be the person, it would be the entity that applies, if you're applying to a company, so the entity would write a check. But is that the applicant's responsibility to make sure that check is paid?
So I will be responsible for it since I signed for it?
That's right.
I have to make sure that my corporate is paid for.
That's clear.
Any further questions?
No, I have to finish. You have a tendency to, when I get to ask a question, you want to jump from here to there, we're in here, I'm being, I'm not here for a jumping in and jump out, I'm trying to get our understanding, you've been doing it ever since I've been here, down through the years, oh, now, let me finish. Let me finish. You have your understanding with the ones you want to call and explain to? You've been disrespecting me since I ever been here, all down through the years. You got any permission to speak, and that's what I'm doing. Okay. 12H, that'll take care of that, that's what I was doing, D and L, sir. Under section on the same page, section 13C, where you have, and read that first paragraph of the question.
The following exclusion applies to electric utilities regulated by Alabama Public Service Commission unless and until such time that electric utility falls within definition of per personal wireless service provider, at which time the following exclusions exclusion will be of no further force or effect with respect to electric utilities provision of personal wireless services as defined in 47 U.S. Code 332.
Okay, under that, the second line on the first paragraph, read that, you let it is fall within the definition of personal wireless.
Right.
What, where are we on that?
So this ordinance is not being given to regulate any current business that the power, electric, an electric utility company may have.
Okay.
If they fall under the definition of perless, personal wireless provider, then this then this exclusion would not include them, so if they, basically if they start offering wireless services, the electric utility no longer has an exclusion under this ordinance.
Is that good? When you said a person, let's go back a minute.
They're currently, they currently do not offer wireless services.
Right.
For cell phone communication, especially data transfer.
Right.
If if they move into that business, then they will fall under this order.
And have it paid like well.
That's right.
Okay, it's good, good.
Yep.
Okay, turn the page back. Page back, section 37. That's fine. Read that.
Utility pole means a pole or similar structure that is used in whole or in part provided communication services or for electric distribution, streetlights, or other lights, cable television, traffic control, signage, or other similar function. The terms include the vertical support structure for traffic light, but does not include a horizontal structure to which signal lights or other traffic control devices are attached, and does not include a pole or similar structure 15 feet in height or less or less unless an authority grants a waiver for such usage.
I'm looking at the vertical support and the horizontal support, where is the problem they are giving? If you do guys first, you're right, you're determining to include vertical support structure.
Right.
Of traffic lights, but does not include?
The actual utility pole is vertical.
Okay, go ahead.
Pole, the pole is the utility structure. The horizontal member would be a support structure, we're talking about the pole.
I was trying to wait until the mayor gave the, we just number one, disrespect the person. Okay, I'm clear on that one. The next is page six. Section four. Okay, the, 14.
Yes, sir. In general, application and permit required. Any person desired to obtain the ability to locate, place, attach, install, operate, maintain, control, remove, attack, reattach, reinstall, relocate, and replace small cell facilities within the city right of way on city-owned support structures or facilities, utility poles, or any private property within the corporate area, the city must file an application, pay the appropriate fee required, and obtain a permit, except as otherwise provided in this ordinance. The city council may have fun determination of public purpose, way, produce, or otherwise modify the provisions in this ordinance, and the permit used as necessary to achieve the desire or saturation of small cell in city with them.
Okay, it says annual license, and the building department, those factors, so I cleared that up on the first question I asked about who's in charge of the building department, so that'll take care of the answer on that before.
Okay.
Now, let us look at, we still on page six, look at E at the bottom.
Okay. An initial permit fee of $500 via assist for application for the co-location that includes up to 5 million support structures with an additional $100 for each.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I can say, let's a little reading time for a moment. You cleared that up when we first opened the other part. Okay, explain to me this five, what's that, nodes?
Nodes, that's, yeah, that's that's actual facility, a node is is the facility that's being constructed.
Now, at the bottom, look at E, it says 200, it's something dollars per node, I think that's what E, nodes, I think somewhere we're going on.
Basically, it's, yeah, rent in public right of way is basically what that is, annual, that's annual renewal fee every year that they are using that support structure in our right of way.
They pay 200 for help every year?
Yes, sir.
What would you say, four, anything? Page seven. We're looking at the other, help, and, and I, on page seven.
Yes, sir.
At the top.
Removal fee may be applicable, fee for removal of facilities and or their respective equipment may be applicable, and as hereby authorized as necessary, such fee may be waived by the department that does these subjects, if they do have already been hindered for a year of quest, and a removal that's not hindered, non-going city project or improvement, and or no additional city personnel is necessary to ensure safe removal.
Okay, on on that, it mentions that no additional personnel is necessary to ensure safety, but and I ask, what if additional personnel is needed, who would pay and how much? For that.
Let's see. The applicant would pay. I want to say we've got that somewhere. Do you need to love me on?
Where do you have it, what's your name?
I don't remember where it is.
What's your name, sir?
My name's Justin Edwards. The, in, in, that same, what's the section, six G, limitations, I, the burden approves you on all times to be on applicant to establish compliance with the requirements of this ordinance and state fair law, so that's that's what's in here, is all burden is on applicant to pay the, whatever is required to maintain or, yeah.
Okay.
Remove the facility or whatever else.
It was in this, according to here, somewhere there, okay. Okay, in section, I don't know which, we're on seven, page seven, I.
Inflation fees.
Yes.
On December 31st, be sure the annual license fee is provided in subsection D3F shall be adjusted for inflation utilized in the simple price index for all urban consumers for the southeast region of U.S. city average, all items not seasonally adjusted 1922, 1941 hundred direct rate base, or a 3% increase, whichever is greater, and never a decrease in increase annually unless otherwise determined by the city council.
Okay, the topic might have said with never decrease.
Right. Typically, inflation always goes up, and that's what they're saying there's, unless otherwise determined by the city council, so that leaves, the building department can't decrease the fees without you guys' approval, but if the consumer price index goes up, we can reassess those fees according to that consumer price index each year.
That's where I saw the increase, that carried me back to where we got stuff, steel stuff, we pump the water, probably out there, with high water, and you went, Russell moved up, and that's where I was looking at, at this, where the increase. So utility, they they can increase the cost, but they want?
Based upon, this gives, this gives the, we can't, you can't increase the cost just because of, like, increasing the cost, that the simple price index gives us the basis for that increase, that is the, that is the standard contractual language there on most contracts, but the building department doesn't have authority to decrease those fees, if those fees need to be decreased, you guys, city council would have to approve that decrease or reassess our fees accordingly, based upon the nature of the, you know, where we're at as far as the economy and that kind of stuff.
Page eight. Number two, five.
Wireless facilities, other than small wireless facilities and micro wireless facilities are strictly prohibited within the city of right of way unless a waiver is granted by the city.
Now, this micro wireless, where they could be used. Talk to me about that, that for me with that.
The, so this, the way I read this is that small wireless facilities and micro wireless facilities.
Are strictly prohibited.
I think we're missing a comma there.
Within the city right of way.
Within the city right of way, wireless facilities are strictly prohibited within city right of way unless a waiver is granted by the city, I'm missing a comma after the second facilities. It says wireless facilities, other than small wireless facilities and micro wireless facilities, so that that's saying small wireless facilities and micro wireless facilities are, you're able to ensure those are wireless facilities, other than those you cannot, so I think we're missing a comma there.
Okay.
So basically, it should read, if you, the comma, if the comma's there after the second, the third facility's actually, it would read wireless facilities are strictly prohibited within the city right of way unless a waiver is granted by the city.
The word be all, the and.
Let me make sure I'm reading.
It should be all.
And it was all up there.
Okay.
If all of that were in a, in a own strength, in a comma.
Okay, correct.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, I think we're missing a comma, I'll make that, I'll make that change.
No problem, I'm just trying to get an understanding, that's all, that's all I'm trying to do, and stay at the bottom, help.
Yep, the applicant.
Okay, I do that one, we can move right along when I get out of here. That that should read she or instead of us.
Okay.
Eight, two, twenty, six, please.
The color of the building department must recommend the placement of a new support structure in the right of way, and the director of public works will approve recommendation of the building department to allow the issuance of a permit that includes placement of a new support structure in the right of way as soon as practical after recommendations made.
Okay, here in the building, you use the word building department when you don't use building department head, but on the director of public works, you said the director of public works.
Right, that's, so this is, we're encouraged in collaboration here when we receive permit application, to make sure the building department and public works are communicating and agreeing upon where this small cell wireless facility should be constructed.
Okay.
Because public works maintains the rights away.
But my point is, they specifically, they use the word one person, the director, the word is the, director, that's the person that's in charge, and where under the building department says the building department, that goes abroad and still saying the department head at the building, building department. It should have department heads, since it's two of you, the department heads. The building department is the person else to find everybody else. So that, 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 that should be corrected, it says department, building department is, since it's two, that's it. Which one is it on?
Uh, section 10, item B, or page 10, page 10, item B. So you're asking to change the definition of building department?
No, 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 what, where you have to put the, uh, department is, building department is, because you use the director of public works, which is one person who he or she is up there.
So you you want, you're proposing for one person to, the definition of building department to identify that as one person?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's going to be a vote, that's going to change, basically, that structure. Has to be a vote, the council's changing.
I'm quite sure I know how that goes, but I'm used to it. Okay, page 10B, we can add here, page 11. Page 11, what's the, any, sir?
Any instance when applicant desires to place facilities or its equipment on private property, following factors, guidelines, requirements, that the building department make consider and will apply when determining whether to issue permit for placement of facilities in any associated sensor, sensor equipment or support structure on private property included, where not limited to the following.
Okay, so, yeah. Talk to me on that, because it's talk about the facility, it's equipped on private property.
You have to have, I mean, you have to have a building permit to build a house or anything else on private property, so that would be, if they're going to build a small cell facility on private property, so has.
Maintain the permit.
Yeah, it has to be in accordance with the ordinance, yes, sir. The, you know, the annual renewal fees, those kind of things may not, wouldn't apply because they're not in city right of way, that would be the difference on private property versus city right of way, but.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Some patient can explain, thank you, sir.
Any further questions? Again, we have the motion, we have the second, we've had discussion. Go do a roll call?
Yeah.
What's my question? Do a approval.
As immediately.
As immediately.
Thank you, make the motion, man.
Right, yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Uh, with the necessary corrections.
That's going to be a new.
I can't hear you.
That's going to be a new motion, so it's going to be a yea or nay right now since we got a roll call, but.
Okay, so the ordinance has been approved, and we will move forward with that. We will drop down to new business this evening to appoint Tiffany Robinson, city clerk, to assume duties for preparation of the official voter list and other election duties. The motion for the appointment. Summit. Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question on the other election duties, because further on, if you reach the guidelines for election coming up, there has to, you have other duties, so I know what we have here is the court's responsibility to do, but the other duties, it asks that the council have the, uh, to appoint a person, whereas if there's a mayor in any city that if he or she is running, that the council appoint and select another person, nothing against what your job is, that you're supposed to do this right here. But above us, that would include you too, whereas might be somebody else to be appointed to do that. I didn't bring the paper with me, who that twenty, twenty guidelines in there, I'll tell you. Shouldn't worry.
Okay, uh, we have the motion, we have the second. All in favor, Libby, you know, we said aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
There are.
The student will be a parent.
Uh, please, suggestion, uh, suggestion, a comment that was in his reading, if you have the comment, you'll see it in there, or it says, if a mayor, you know.
Then they will appoint the clerk to fulfill the duties that the mayor cannot fulfill because he is running for reelection. So that's what this is, and by law, I am the absentee manager.
Right.
So, but the council does have to appoint me, since Mayor Willis is running, to oversee other election duties and the voters list.
But it says, uh, oh, the clerk automatically you do that.
Automatically is the absentee manager.
Yes.
Yes.
And all paperwork comes to the clerk.
But I do not automatically do the polling list for other election duty, that's why you have to. Because the mayor can't do those two.
That's right. Thank you, so. And that's what it's been.
So how was your side?
Yes, yes, it's clear. All I'm trying to do is get on. I'm not a bitch, I just, I'm trying.
Then item three this evening is to approve comprehensive IT upgrades in the police department, public works, and administrative billing, Jim McGee.
Yes, sir. Uh, basically what I'm asking for is, we need equipment to upgrade all the systems to talk to each other between admin billing, police department, public works, and some to the library, but that's not a very, very small piece over there, but what this does is include all the equipment that we need. We need firewalls, we need a new server up here, we have a new server in the police department, that's, that's outside of the scope, but it also includes all the licenses we need, all the equipment, and the network consulting, we need to get it all working together, and that's to get all, all, all the, all the parts working, silent, silent things are communicated together, telephone lines and internet, and it also includes all the online backups, the backups won't be housed in-house anymore, they'll be offsite, securely offsite. Uh, so that's essentially what we're, what we're going for. Do you have any questions?
Okay, this is the first read, so any discussion?
What's the cost?
That's twenty-four hundred dollars a month. And if it's possible, we need to do some of the stuff to get some of the police department to, if it's possible, then we suspend the rules to, to allow it, that be, that be great, if not.
So when you talked about communicating between each building, what kind of change from that?
Right, so in order to save money, in the, in the past few years, we kind of operated
these buildings as a, called a separate small business, and it allowed us to do things at a lower cost, but now we need the phone systems to communicate with each other, we need all the backups to communicate around several buildings, so we can manage all that here without having to go onsite to the backups for every single, every single location.
Got you. We, we have a server here that's been struggling in the long, how many years do you have?
It's actually a twelve-year-old.
And it, it is, they don't even make the parts to keep it up anymore, so to replace that server is a pretty good sized amount of money, so this ties all of our systems together, will eliminate that server, do you?
That's correct, and even to complicate a little bit, a little bit further, the, the type of work we're trying to do is not, we can't use a twelve-year-old server to do that, we have to update that in order to finish the job.
Motion to suspend the rules. Have a motion to have a second. Have a motion and a second.
Okay, Councilmember Robin?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Justice?
Yes.
Councilmember Dan, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Willis?
Yes.
Okay, so the rules haven't been suspended, we'll move forward with this, entertain a motion to, for a monthly charge of twenty-four hundred, one dollar and eighty-five cents. Have a motion.
Yes, sir.
Who gets?
It's all over the city.
Go ahead, you talk.
It would be here, it would be public works.
But police station, who gets it, is that it?
That's in five.
Well, like I've been asked here, since I've been here, let's respect, you need to make that motion, that's in your district.
Well, it's not necessarily just the police station, it's this building too.
I understand that, Mayor, the building is down there in the, whatever.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, to move forward with this, is two thousand four hundred, one dollars and eighty-five cents per month for this total upgrade, all in favor, they've been all saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So that too has been approved. Okay. And then item four under new business this evening is a clarification of the fire department's use of their part-time personnel. Chief?
When this coronavirus thing first started, we started seeing situations where a department would have exposure, and then they would wind up losing half their workforce to go home, quarantined for two weeks, that type of thing. We started developing our contingency plan, how we were going to staff, should that happen to us. Well, my first route to attack that was, that we're going to use our part-time people and roll them into staffing twenty-four hours a day, double shifts, whatever, split shifts, however you want to do it. During that process, HR brought me a document from about ten years ago, when we first did our part-time people, we were doing it on a safer grant, and it had very specific times that our part-time people would be used. So that motion had a eighty-five Monday through Friday restriction on it, which would mean we could not use our people after five o'clock, and it did not solve our problem, so to get some clarification on that, and basically sort of ask that we be allowed the same flexibility as other departments, but their part-time people, that they can, uh, use them at the discretion of the department head, as long as they stay within the budget that's laid out, and the hiring processes would include, you know, signing off by the mayor and whoever else. We were trying to get our, our wordage to fall in line with the rest of the department head departments in the city. Today, I got a call from Justin Edwards, saying that the new personnel policy that has been adopted after that motion was put on the books, did give all department heads the same authority to use their part-time people the same way. So I don't think we need any action, unless somebody sees a reason that we would, I don't think we need a agenda item, this is just done for sort of clarification, for me to understand that I do have that approval and communicate, I'll, I'll be using my part-time people in that manner, so.
Just to piggyback and identify everybody, twenty thirteen was the personnel manual that the city adopted for all department heads and all personnel, and there was a moratorium on everything prior to that, that was done at that same time, so I think it wiped out the prior motion that came through, and I think we're operating under that personnel policy, and like Rex said, I don't think there's any action that has to be taken, I think the action was taken in twenty thirteen that did that, but I think he's just looking for confirmation of that.
Yeah. And I appreciate you catching that, I guess that's how this process works, so. Okay, so that is just for the council's information and clarification. Uh, and the resolution twenty twenty-seven-six, that's one, this is the roundabout project in pre-engineering, and the next phase of the downtown redevelopment, which has already been approved.
It was approved when you approved the engineering agreement with Aldo a couple weeks ago, uh, maybe a month or so ago, you approved the agreement, they just need the resolution to go along with it.
So we need to take action on that.
We need to add it and break it.
Okay, we need to add this to the agenda, motion to add to the agenda. Summit. Second, I have a motion and then a second, to add a resolution to the agenda.
Councilmember Robbins?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Justice?
Yes.
Councilmember Dan?
Sorry.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Willis?
Okay, so we've got it added into this approach.
So, motion being given to add to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve and second, any discussion on this resolution?
Uh, Councilmember Robbins?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Justice?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Willis?
Yes. Uh, as an announcement, motion to adjourn. We stand adjourned. Okay, as a.